Well, I saved all my wishes for your kissing. Well, I saved all my money to spend on you. While you were downtown just running around. And I've been home waiting on you. Hey, long days working, I come home. Just to find it's just another night alone. Well, I've had about enough tripping over your stuff. So you can find it out in the road. It's why I saved all my wishes for your kissing. I saved all my money to spend on you. While you were downtown just running around. And I've been home waiting on you. Living all round, but it's been treating me fine. And I pull it down off the shelf. It seems to pick me up at just the right times. When I'm with her, I'm not by myself. That's right, I saved all my wishes for your kissing. That's right, I saved all my money to spend on you. While you were downtown just running around. And I've been home waiting on you. Well, now, I don't wanna hear you knocking on my door. Looking for a place to crash. Oh, now, I'm seeing clearer, it's as plain as day. That you are just a pain in my eye. That's right, I saved all my wishes for your kissing. That's right, I saved all my money to spend on you. While you were downtown just running around. And I've been home waiting on you. Well, while you were downtown just running around. And I've been home waiting on you.
Thank you, everybody. We're Saints and Livers. We're from Manchester, Vermont. Real treat to be here. Yeah, anybody here from Manchester? Cool. Oh, good.
Oh, the best place I could ever be is with you and me. I'm a cowboy, you are my queen. Oh, you and me, Halloween. When the wolves are done howling and the moon is dark And the night becomes your own. Well, you're all alone with the whistle of the wind. You're all alone with no friends. Oh, the leaves are falling on your head As you take one minute to rest. You've been in the woods, running from it all, Running to that beat in your chest. Oh, the best place I could ever be is with you and me. I'm a cowboy, you are my queen. You and me, Halloween. Oh, the sun began shining as I approached the edge Of the woods, I knew this was the end. Oh, my teeth are chattering and my bones are cold, Looking for a new fire to burn. Oh, the best place I could ever be is with you and me. I'm a cowboy, you are my queen. You and me, Halloween. Oh, I'm free, oh, I'm freed from the concrete walls That I built up for her. Oh, I'm me, I'm me, I ain't gonna be Going back to the way things were. Oh, the best place I could ever be is with you and me. I'm a cowboy, you are my queen. You and me, Halloween. Oh, the best place I could ever be is with you and me.
That's a true story, and I mean that.
Well, I tried to sleep last night, too much screaming in my head. Fighting the Lord, devil and sinners, and no one wound up dead. Glowing out the carburetor, chasing things you can't see. Well, I almost caught the tail end, it was right in front of me. There's someone in the corner. She looks just like you. What good are good intentions if you just can't follow through? What good are good intentions if you just can't follow through? Well, I've been thinking in the daytime, chasing ghosts by night. If only she would let me go, I wouldn't have to fight. Well, I dig a hole and I lie in it for as long as I can stand. Curse the ground she walks on or the dirt on my hands. There's someone in the corner. She looks just like you. What good are good intentions if you just can't follow through? Oh, what good are good intentions if you just can't follow through? Whoa, what good are good intentions if you just can't follow through? Whoa, what good are good intentions if you just can't follow through?
Thank you. Everybody excited for some Bernie today? Yeah, us too.
These times, these times, they're gonna swallow me whole. Swallow me whole, these times, oh, these times. They're gonna swallow me whole. Come round, gather round, to the old swimming hole. Grab your old fishing pole, let's have ourselves a time. Edging fish on line. Oh, the sun shining through, your long golden hair On the back of your chair, and out of care in the world. Out of care in the world. We'd ride, we'd ride, tied for motorbike. How we used to feel like we were free with the birds. With a mountain bird.
Thank you. This is a real treat for us, so thank you very much for listening, showing up early. This one's called "Garden Song." Hope you're eating your tomatoes out there, folks. They don't last long.
Ain't it funny how time moves so? When you take time to eventful. Turn the soil down, seeds to soil. Oh, what a sunny love will make garden grow. Oh, what a sunny love will make garden grow. Put yourself out there for the world to know. That you're someone to see, that you're something to show. Let the storms roll by, let the hard winds blow. Oh, what a sunny love will make garden grow. Oh, what a sunny love will make garden grow. Last a sun to save her heart a glow. Oh, rain in her heart so her love will show. Well, our future, it's not alone. With what a sunny love will make garden grow. With what a sunny love will make garden grow. Feed your love so your roots grow. Take home the word you can hold. This life on earth, it's one and all. With what a sunny love will make garden grow. Oh, what a sunny love will make garden grow. Oh, what a sunny love will make garden grow.
Thank you. Let me get a shot of you all, because you're all beautiful people here. Everybody wave and look really excited to be here. Yeah. Beautiful.
My mama, she don't worry about me. My mama, she don't worry about me. If I was squeaky wheel, well, she'd give me degrees. My mama, she don't worry about me. Well, it's lonely on the hill, but I got my freewill, So I guess on the hill I stay. Yeah, no need to call, no need to ride, I'm damn sure to be okay. Well, my friends, they don't ask for me. Well, my friends, they don't call for me. Well, the only time to call, I got something they need. My friends, they don't ask about me. Well, it's lonely on the hill, but I got my freewill, So I guess on the hill I stay. Yeah, no need to call, no need to ride, I'm damn sure to be okay. Well, my dog don't wag his tail no more. Well, my dog don't even greet me at the door. All he wants is to be fed, then he goes straight to bed. My dog don't wag his tail no more. Well, it's lonely on the hill, but I got my freewill, So I guess on the hill I stay. Yeah, no need to call, no need to ride, I'm damn sure to be okay. Well, it's lonely on the hill, but I got my freewill, So I guess on the hill I stay. Yeah, no need to call, no need to ride, I'm damn sure to be okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Hi, everyone. If we could just have all the speakers come meet us over here Under the Senator Sanders banner, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ride along on these dusty roads, filled with lonesome sorrow and sin. I call my home these dusty roads, And I may never have paved them again. I didn't need you, I didn't want you, And I won't feed into your shiny lies. And I was raised just that working man's boy. I ain't afraid to show you the light. Where the old lonesome lane, and the air it smells empty. Nobody comes see, ain't no flowers on my stone. Where the old lonesome lane, and the north wind's cold. Ain't no green grass where the old lonesome lane. Shouldn't have put you through my threshold. Should have closed all them doors behind me. Had to put you... Had to put you in that rain, is what it feels like to be bound tight. My only friends now are Southwest, I always trust in American steel. I'm on the road now, and I'm on a case though, leaving you in like old dust around. Where the old lonesome lane, and the air it smells empty, nobody comes see, ain't no flowers on my stone. Where the old lonesome lane, and the north wind's cold. Ain't no green grass where the old lonesome lane. Where the old lonesome lane, and the air it smells empty, nobody comes see, ain't no flowers on my stone. Where the old lonesome lane, and the north wind's cold. Yeah, there ain't no green grass where the old lonesome lane. Yeah, there ain't no green grass where the old lonesome lane. Yeah, there ain't no green grass where the old lonesome lane. Yeah, there ain't no green grass where the old lonesome lane. Thank you, thank you. The anticipation for Bernie is real right now. My heart's starting to race. Really excited. If you're not familiar with us, we're Saints and Liars. These are all original songs that we've all written and played around the state, so thank you for listening. This one's called "Day to Day." Well, people, they ask me, why are you so quiet? They should be inside my head. Where the eagles are soaring and the bees are buzzing. I like to be in there instead. Sometimes I say I was born to strive the grave. What do I know? I've never been anywhere anyway. Who am I to say that our lives ought to turn my face? While I live my life, day to day. Well, the city, it smells like the downstairs need emptying. Especially after rain. Well, I fail to recall what initially brought me. Was the life I've been living driving me so insane? Sometimes I say I was born to strive the grave. What do I know? I've never been anywhere anyway. Who am I to say that our lives ought to turn my face? While I live my life, day to day. Well, the old Lake Street winners ain't where I belong. No, the city ain't where I should be. All the people complaining, there's too many people, people, people. Well, I believe, I believe in green mountains and me. Sometimes I say I was born to strive the grave. What do I know? I've never been anywhere anyway. Who am I to say that our lives ought to turn my face? While I live my life, day to day. Oh, while I live my life, day to day. Thank you. Oh, the hills were as green as I'd ever seen, it must have been all over the range. And the skies were red, my blood shining. Whoa, hey, little sister, wearing this to get a dream. Hello, sir. Thank you so much.
Brattleboro, thank you. Whoa. There's a lot of people. Hey, guys, how are you? All right, I'm gonna begin, oh, there's a minute. Let me thank Saints and Liars. Great music, we appreciate it. And we have some great speakers who are gonna be talking about where we are as a community, as a state, and as a nation, and where we should be going, and I appreciate them, and Earl Munsinger's gonna introduce them in a minute. The reason I'm here today is kind of a different purpose than what I do when I usually come to Brattleboro. Usually, we do rallies or events, but today, I am here not just as your senator, I'm here as the chairman of the U.S. Senate Budget Committee. And generally speaking, what budget chairmen do is they do a lot of work inside the Beltway, and there's an enormous amount of work to do when you're dealing with trillion-dollar budgets. But I believe that, given the fact that this is the people's budget, we should take the budget to the people. A couple of weeks ago, I was in Indiana, I was in Iowa, I was in Michigan, and this weekend, we're gonna be in Springfield, we're up in Newport. Yesterday, we had a great turnout in St. Johnsbury. Later on today, we'll be in Middlebury. So what our job is to try to explain, which happens too rarely, media does a pretty poor job on this, in explaining actually what we are trying to do, what are the priorities that we're trying to establish. And let me tell you something, if I meant, I got off the phone 15 minutes ago with a colleague of mine, a senator from New York, and he had spent this morning touring the locations in New York where people drowned because of the unprecedented torrential rainfall. He was saying people in basement apartments, the water came flooding in, died a terrible death. One of the priorities that we are going to be working on is not just rebuilding our infrastructure, but is finally addressing the existential threat of climate change. And I think about what happened just in New York City, what's going on in New Orleans right now. Here we are in this unbelievably beautiful day here. But let us be clear, climate change is a threat to every state in this country, every country on this earth, and every day that we delay, every day that we delay, and I know we got a lot of bunch of little kids here, and that is beautiful, I love to see kids come, but every day that we delay addressing this crisis, working with countries around the world is a day that we create a unlivable and unhealthy planet for future generations. We cannot allow that to happen. Now, usually, what a budget is about in Washington is to say, okay, look, you know, we're gonna put 3% more on education, we'll cut healthcare by 2%, but another 1% in this and that will nibble around the edges. What we are trying to do now, and have been doing in the last year, is something very different, and I'm not here to tell you, and let me be very clear about it, I am not here to tell you that what we are doing now is in any way enough, enough to address the crises that we are facing. I'm not here to tell you that. But what I am telling you is that we are working on the most consequential pieces of legislation for working-class people since the 1930s, that I am here to tell you that. It's not enough, and I'll tell you where I see the deficiencies are, and I also have to tell you what most of you know, is that right now, we are operating in a very, very tough climate in Washington. In the Senate, we have 50 votes in the Democratic Caucus, I'm an independent, in the Democratic Caucus, Republicans have 50 votes. And we passed the American Rescue Plan a number of months ago, and I want to say a few words about that, we passed that after 14 hours of debate at 5:00 in the morning, with the Vice President of the United States casting the deciding vote. And what we want to do, what we want to do is to take a look at where we are as a nation, and what is the context for what we're trying to do right now? And the context, as all of you know, is that at this moment, the wealthiest people in this country are becoming much richer, while the middle class is struggling, and while working-class families are, in many cases, having a hard time feeding their families. And that is what, and what we have got to do right now, for the first time in the modern history of this country, is to demand that the government of the United States address the needs of working families, not just the wealthy and the powerful. And as we speak, as we speak on this legislation, what I gotta tell you is the insurance companies, the drug companies, and the billionaire class are doing everything they can to either defeat what we're doing or to make it less significant. And that speaks to what you also know, is the corrupt political system that we have, which allows big money interests to buy elections. And it is a system which today, in many parts of this country, are working to deny black and brown citizens, young people, and the disabled the right to vote. So we have got our work cut out for us, and I want to tell you a little bit about what we have done in the last year. And that is the passage of the American Rescue Plan, a $1.9 trillion piece of legislation, helped tens of, millions of Americans come through the worst crisis that we have seen in our lifetimes. And I don't have to tell anybody here what a horrible year we have gone through. Our kids have been unable to go to school. Elderly people have been isolated in their homes, unable to communicate, embrace their grandchildren. And the result of all of that is mental illness in this country is skyrocketing, we're seeing an increase in alcoholism, drug addiction, domestic violence, that's what we're seeing. And on top of that, in the last year, because of COVID, which has taken over 650,000 lives in America, on top of that, as you all know, we saw the worst economic disruption since the Great Depression because people were unable to get to work. And I'm happy to say that through the American Rescue Plan, in a very significant way, we stood up and helped families in need. What did we do? What we did was to say that we are gonna provide $1,400 for every middle-class and working-class person in this country and their children in the midst of this terrible crisis. And you know what that $2,800 or more meant to a family that was having trouble feeding their kids? I could tell you in Burlington, and I expect it was no different down here, we had lines of cars of people who were lined up in order to get an emergency food package. Lines of people who could not get the food that they needed, and for the first times in their life depended upon the government for help, and that help was provided, and I want to thank the national god for helping us distribute that food. That's not all that we did. We understood that there were parents with little kids who are having a difficult time putting food on their table, and what we did was provide $300 per child for every working-class family in this country. And you know what that did? And I want you all to appreciate what this did and what policy can do. Historically, for the last many decades, the United States has had the highest rate of childhood poverty, shamefully, of any major country on earth. As a result of what we did in the American Rescue Plan, that $1,400 for $300 per child, we have cut childhood poverty in America by over 50%. And what we have also done is in that package... And what we have also done is, in that package, put billions of dollars into vaccination distribution to make sure that people all over this country, in rural areas and areas hard to get to, receive the vaccinations they need. That saved tens of thousands of lives. We extended unemployment benefits with the $300 supplement. We got money to small businesses. Go to Brattleboro, talk to the small-business people here. And my guess is that they will tell you that their business was saved and their workers continue to get an income precisely because of what the federal government did. What the American Rescue Plan was about was an emergency response to an emergency situation. The spread of COVID unprecedented, the economic collapse unprecedented. And that's what we did. But many of us understood that that was not enough, that responding to an emergency is the right thing to do, but now is the time to take a hard look at the structural crises facing our country, the long-term crises that have gone on decade after decade after decade. And what that crisis is about is very clear, you all know it. And I'm not here to tell you, let me reiterate, that this bill does everything that it should. It doesn't. I want it to do a lot more. But the reality is that with no Republican support on this legislation, not one, not one Republican, we have to work with 50 Democratic members, some of whom are quite conservative, to be honest with you. So we are struggling right now to do the best that we can, but I want to tell you what we are doing. We're doing two things, which I believe, added together, are transformational. Number one, you have all heard for decades, the fact that our infrastructure is crumbling. What does that mean? It means our roads, it means, it means our roads, it means our bridges, means our water systems. I don't know how many people know this, but in America today, there are millions of people who, when they turn on the tap, cannot drink the water that comes out, because it is polluted. We got to deal with wastewater plants, we have to deal with broadband, we have to deal with a million things in infrastructure, public transportation. One of the bills that was passed, it's called the Bipartisan Infrastructure Bill, will put $550 billion of new money into rebuilding the infrastructure. And that's a good thing. The second bill, the second bill that we are working on, and I'm playing an active role in this one as Chairman of the Budget Committee, is called reconciliation. Now, why is it called reconciliation? About three people in the world know why. Because you got a whole bunch of Senate rules, and what the rules say is that for major legislation, you need 60 votes. What we are trying to do is get around that through a process called reconciliation. Now, my Republican colleagues in recent years have used reconciliation, that is, 50 votes, not 60, in order to give massive tax breaks to billionaires and large corporations. That's what they did. My Republican colleagues used reconciliation to try to repeal the Affordable Care Act and throw 30 million people off the healthcare they have. They failed. They tried. We are trying to use the reconciliation process in order to improve life for working families, for children, the elderly, the sick, and the poor. That's what we are trying to do. So let me tell you a little bit about, and it's a big bill, and I can't tell you about it all, but let me tell you a little bit about what is in it. For a start, we're going to start paying attention to the children of this country in a way that we never have before. And what that means, because the American Rescue Plan was an emergency plan, it expires at the end of one year. Those $300 payments for working families will expire unless we pass the reconciliation bill and extend those payments for years to come. And that's what we've got to do. Number two, all of you know, I'm sure it's true in Brattleboro, it's true all over this state, it's true all over this country, we have a childcare system which is totally dysfunctional. We don't have enough slots, childcare workers earn disastrous wages, very low wages, and parents are forced to pay far more than they can afford. So what we're going to do on childcare is greatly expand the number of people who will get free childcare. What we're going to do, and listen to this, what we're going to do is make pre-K for three- and four-year-olds universal and free. And think about what that means. What that means is that we are extending public education by two years. So we are paying attention, I think, finally, to the needs of our children and working parents. In terms of education, let me tell you what else we are doing in this bill. It is my view that in a highly competitive global economy, we should have the best workforce on earth. And that means that everybody, regardless of income, should be able to get a higher education. That's my view. And I believe, as you've heard me say for years, that we should make public colleges and universities tuition-free and cancel all student debts in America. That is my view, that is not the view of the majority of the members of the caucus. What we will do in this bill, though, is not insignificant. The goal is to make two years of community college tuition-free. Now, what does that mean? What that means is that right now, in Vermont, in many parts of this country, you got a lot of good-paying jobs that are unfilled because workers don't have the skills to get those jobs. Community colleges can provide those skills. The other thing that it could do is allow somebody after two years to transfer those credits into a four-year college if you want a four-year degree. That is not insignificant. The other part of what we're doing for higher education is to significantly increase Pell Grants in this country to make it easier for people to be able to afford to go to college. Now, it is my view that our current healthcare system is an unmitigated disaster, that we have got to join the rest of the industrialized world and understand that healthcare is a human right, not a privilege. And that we have got to guarantee healthcare to every man, woman, and child through a Medicare-for-all, single-payer program. What a dysfunctional healthcare system is about is paying in America almost double of what any other country on earth is paying, and yet we have 90 million Americans who are uninsured or underinsured. We pay the highest prices in the world for prescription drugs. We don't have enough doctors, we don't have enough nurses, we don't have enough medical personnel in areas of this country where we need them. That is called a dysfunctional healthcare system, designed to make huge profits for the insurance companies and the drug companies. Now, once again, I am not here to tell you that this bill is going to address the healthcare crisis the way it should. But what I will tell you is we're going to make more reforms in Medicare than at any time in the last 50 years. So what does that mean? What it means that we are going to expand Medicare coverage to cover dental care, hearing aids, and eyeglasses. Now, the other thing that we're going to do, and many of you know this, is we are the only, virtually the only country, not only major country, only country, that doesn't guaranteed paid family and medical leave. You all know that? You know that? All over the world. In Scandinavia, you have a baby, you will get eight, nine months off of paid leave at maybe 80, 90%. Other countries vary. Because they understand that when you have a baby, mom and dad have got to bond with the baby, and that's the right thing to do. In America, today, there are low-income women who are giving birth, and a week later, one week later, have got to go back to work because there's no income coming into the family. That is not what a civilized society should be about. And on top of that, you got moms and dads who are in a situation of when their kids get sick, when their kids get sick, they have a choice. Either they stay home with their kid, which is what they want to do, and then they hear from their employer that they don't come to work, they're going to lose their job. What I'm happy to tell you about is that in this legislation, for the first time, we will begin the process of having paid family and medical leave in America. All of you are aware that there is a major housing crisis in this country, that we have 600,000 people who are homeless in America, and we have 18 million households who are spending 50% or more of their limited incomes on housing. This legislation will put more money into low-income and affordable housing than any legislation in the history of the United States. This legislation will put many billions of dollars into home healthcare, so that in an aging society, elderly people and people with disabilities will be able to get the care they need at home, rather than be forced into a nursing home. And when we do all of those things, we are going to create millions of good-paying jobs, and let me underline, good-paying. And there's something else in this bill that I want all of you to know, and I mentioned it earlier, we are putting hundreds of billions of dollars into combating climate change. And that means we are going to spend a great deal of money transforming our transportation system, transforming how we produce electricity, transforming agriculture and making it greener. And there's something else we're going to spend money on, and that is weatherizing our homes and buildings, investing very significantly in wind and solar and other sustainable energies. And there's a provision in the bill that I am particularly excited about, because as I have been around the country, what I have seen is that millions of young people feel passionately, as they should, about the need to break our dependence on fossil fuel and cut carbon emissions. You got a younger generation all over the world that is leading this effort. What this bill will do is put tens of billions of dollars into the creation of a civilian Climate Corps. And what that will do is provide good-paying jobs and educational benefits to young people who get involved in helping to transform our energy system. Now, does this bill do everything that has to be done? Absolutely not. But it is a significant step forward. And in fact, the first piece of legislation that I have seen since I have been in Congress that actually takes a hard look at the crises facing working families, the middle class, and the environment. It is a step forward. It is going to be a struggle. And I'm on the phone, day after day, making sure that we can pass this legislation. In the House, 50-50. In the Senate, they got a three-vote margin, not a whole lot to spare. So what we, let me conclude my remarks by just saying this. We are living in a moment where it is very easy to feel overwhelmed. It is very easy to be depressed. Turn on the TV and you see COVID, it's not gone away, although, thank God, we can hold meetings outdoors now, could not do it a year ago. We are looking at the damage of climate, we are looking at the attacks on American democracy. These are tough times, not going to kid you, they are. But if we have the courage, in my view, to stand up to the demagogues who want to divide us up by the color of our skin, or where we were born, or our sexual orientation, if we are prepared to stand together as a people and have the courage to take on the big-money special interests whose greed is doing so much harm to this country, if we have the courage, I believe not only can we address the crises that we face, but we can do more. We can move this country in a much more vibrant, democratic way, in which all of our people have the standard of living that they need to enjoy long and prosperous lives. That is our challenge. Let's go forward and do it. Thank you. Okay, what I want to do now, we're going to do two things. We're going to do two things, and that is, let me introduce some of our speakers, and we are very, we are very privileged to have some great people from the Brattleboro area, and Orley is going to introduce them in a moment. And then what we'll do is do questions and answers. So let me introduce somebody everybody knows, the founder of the Strolling of the Heifers, Orley Munzing.
Hello, Wyndham County. So as Bernie said, I'm Orley Munzing, I'm retired now, but I still work on Strolling of the Heifers. The good news is, as soon as the challenging times are over and it's more appropriate to gather huge crowds, we will certainly stroll the heifers again. I know I'm speaking for everyone here, but Senator Sanders, thank you so much for inviting us all with this wonderful food provided by the Top of the Hill Grill, the wonderful music that we have from Saints and Liars, and don't forget, Rescue is right there to answer your questions and provide you with a vaccine if you need one. So don't be shy, please go there. I'd also like to wish our community members who are celebrating Jewish New Year, which starts at sunset, Shonatova, Happy Jewish New Year, and let's hope for a better year. What a wonderful opportunity for us to speak. I'm going to introduce some wonderful speakers here, and then Senator Sanders will take questions and answers, so please don't leave. The first person I'd like to introduce is Lily Charkey, an incredible young senior from Brower Union High School. In her middle-school year and high-school career, she accomplished so much. She was a legislative page at the Vermont State House, she worked on Emily Kornhauser's campaign, has done various work with Gun Sense, where she attended a gun violence prevention summit at Boston University, and she testified in support of S-30. She also interned with a lawyer, working on various She also interned with a lawyer, working on various police shooting cases, and currently she's working with the Wyndham County Democrats on various projects. Her long-term goal is to be a civil rights lawyer. Let me introduce Lily Charkey.
Hi, everyone. As I look out, I see familiar faces that I have not seen in over a year and a half. Like so many here, I feel honored to call the community of Brattleboro my home. I'm a senior at Brattleboro, which means I was a sophomore in high school when school shut down. Now I'm 18 years old. Stepping up to my last year of high school has been bittersweet. As I prepare for my last first and first goodbyes, I am faced with remorse. My grade, like so many others, has not been given enough time to fully grow up together. On Friday, the first day of schools, the seniors held a class breakfast in the parking lot. It was the first time in my four years of high school that our grade gathered outside of school. It was great. I reconnected with people I had not spoken to in years and met three people I had never seen before. When it was done, I couldn't help but think, what if I had known those people a year ago? What if I had been able to see that one friend from freshman year during the pandemic? I know my feelings are not unique. I live with two high-risk grandparents, and during the first four months of the pandemic, I was seeing one friend without a mask outside. We would spend hours biking around and hiking every peak within a 10-mile radius. I learned to slow down and appreciate the beauty of Vermont. I am terrible at slowing down. Quarantine forced me to change. When COVID did not improve, I found ways to safely reintroduce people into my life. I began holding nightly Zoom calls. Each night, I would invite different guests, and we would play games, do homework, talk about anxieties, or just coexist with each other in silence. While this was not ideal, I found myself savoring these moments of socialization. Although I was often overwhelmed with separation anxiety, I made it through. As a result, I learned to truly appreciate everyone who has had an impact on my life. I am all too aware of the time I have lost. However, moving forward, I hope to utilize the adaptability I gained during quarantine to form a new sense of home. As a high school student, I hope to enjoy every moment of childhood I have left. As a member of the Brattleboro community, I hope to continue to explore everything my town has to offer. And as an individual, I hope to continue to slow down and appreciate every aspect of my life. If everyone can take a moment to view the last year and a half as a monumental learning experience, I believe we can recreate an incredibly inclusive, exciting, and empathetic community. Thank you.
The next speaker really doesn't need much of an introduction, but I really would like to let people know that in her first term, this is Senator Becca Ballant. Served on the Institute Committee and the Economic Development and Housing Committee, as well as Judicial Rule Committee. During her second term, she was made Vice Chair of the Education Committee and continued to serve on Economic Development Committee. She was elected to the position of Senate Majority Leader, was also appointed to the Chair of the Senate Sexual Harassment Prevention Panel. And in her third term, she was re-elected as the President pro temp. When she's not running around the State House, she's running in Hubbard Park. Becca lives in Browborough with her wife and her two children. Without much ado, Senator Becca Ballant.
Hello. What a great turnout. We knew there would be a great turnout for the senator today here in Wyndham County. Just want to remind everyone, we were the county that put Bernie over the top in 1990. First run for Congress. He may live in Burlington, but we know his heart is right here in Brattleboro with all of us. So I want to say it's a tremendous honor to be up here on the stage with all of these speakers and especially Senator Sanders, who's always been a champion for labor and working people all over Vermont and all over the country. I don't need to tell you, millions of Americans are out of work right now. They're scared for the future. They're scared for their kids. They're worried because their benefits are going to be running out soon. They're resilient. They're clever. They are not lazy. American workers are not lazy. And I bring this up because there's a big lie floating around right now that conservatives are pushing about the unemployment benefits. And that is that people don't want to work. That's why they're out of work. They don't want to work. They're lazy. We've been too generous in their benefits. You turn on the news and you see the same talking point. But we know it's not true because if you look at the states that ended the unemployment benefits early, they did not see workers in droves coming back to the workforce. Now, why is that? Senator Sanders spoke to some of them. We have a childcare crisis. We have a housing crisis. People are worried about getting sick. They're worried about bringing sickness home to their families. So it makes sense that a lot of people would be hesitant to return to the workforce. The other thing you may not realize, millions of Americans decided to retire during the pandemic because they looked around and they said, I'm not going to be here much longer on this planet. And I want to make this life count. I want to make my work count. So there are so many reasons why we see millions of people out of work right now. But what we don't want to do is embolden these people who say that the American workforce is lazy. There's an economic journalist named Heather Long, and recently she's done a deep dive on why it is that people are not returning to work. And she's calling this period "The Great Reassessment of the Workforce." She's saying, is it any surprise when workers are going through a deep emotional and psychological crisis? Is it any surprise that they might want to take advantage of changing what they're doing for work? That they might want to get additional skills? That they might want to get back to work, be on a different pathway in their work? And I had the pleasure of speaking with the senator a few weeks ago about this exact issue and how we have to make sure that the dollars that we spend through our coronavirus relief funds and the American Rescue Plan are dedicated to making sure that workers across Vermont and across this country can get the skills they need to do the jobs they want to do. Now, I know that if you're a business owner or you run an organization in Vermont right now, across industries, you are having difficulty finding workers. And that's really hard, not just for you. It's hard for the other people who are working additional shifts. But I want to tell you, I had a conversation with the owner of a restaurant in central Vermont last weekend. And he said, yeah, it is hard to fill the shifts. Yes, it is hard that I have a lot of people calling in because they don't want to be in the public right now. He said, but I get it. I've got to hang up signs all over my restaurant to remind people to be kind to my workers, to be patient with my workers, to not blame them because it's taking so long for us to wait on them. And he said, I have to continue to remind people as they come in. They're here serving you in the midst of a global pandemic. They should be applauded and not demonized. Now, Representative Kornheiser is behind me. I know Mike Murwicky is in the audience, Michelle Bostelin. There are other representatives in the audience. I want to make sure that we give them a big hand today because they were the ones working to turn the American Rescue dollars out into the community. So thank you for all of you putting in the long hours. So one of the things that the senator and I talked about last week is that we need to couple our imagination with dollars. We need to think really carefully about how we're spending these dollars so that workers across the country can get the care and the support that they need to be living and working and supporting their families in a way that has dignity and the way that gives them respect. So on this Labor Day, I want to leave you with three things. We need to fight the big lie that Republicans are using to demonize American workers and saying that they're lazy. We need to show compassion for our workforce. Every day when we're out in our community, we need to show these workers compassion. They are doing work for us and serving us in the midst of an emergency. And the last thing I want to say is, we need to fight like hell to protect this democracy. Thank you.
The next person I'd like to introduce has worked so hard for Wyndham County. Representative Emily Kornheiser. She's a member of the Vermont House of Representatives, representing Wyndham 201 district. And also, she's the Vice Chair of the House Ways and Means Committee. She lives in Browborough in a converted barn with her family and her mutt named Kaiser. She's also involved with her County Democratic Committee, co-chair Feminist Action Network, a town meeting representative, a founding member of Wyndham County Action Network, and generally involved in the grassroots of our community. Let me welcome Representative Emily Kornheiser.
Thank you, Orly. I'm Emily Kornheiser, one of three state representatives for the town of Brattleboro, and I am so happy to be here with you all today on Labor Day to celebrate workers' rights in America. Tonight is also the first night of Rosh Hashanah, the Jewish New Year, and the beginning of the Days of Awe. At this turning of the year, I'm reflecting on what we've learned about labor in our community over the last long year and what I want to pull forward into this next one. We welcome the New Year with sweetness and abundance, to set the tone. And I can't think of a greater show of abundance than the way the federal government has stepped up in these last few months. Programs such as supplemental unemployment insurance, rental assistance, direct cash payments to families, and money for the state of Vermont to meet our community's needs, the likes of which we have not seen for generations. Thank you, Senator. I am so hopeful about what's coming next. We have learned what's possible when we invest in our communities, when we aim for transformational change, when we build not just a safety net to catch people, but a floor for families to stand on. We know that when the government invests, when we invest directly in our community, that we spend it on each other, on our children and on food and on a little bit of breathing room for each of us. And so we've seen what happens when we commit to each other this year through small acts of caring, like masking or mutual aid, how with both those individual acts and solid governance, we can protect the health of our whole population. So that's the sweetness that I'm bringing into the New Year. What we've learned about each other, how we've showed up to make sure that each feel welcome, how justice can mean each according to need, that we've felt for a moment what it is to live that and what it looks like when we don't. But the Days of Awe, which begin tonight and end next week with Yom Kippur, are about more than that. They're about reflection and atonement and regret. It's about setting intentions. Over the last year, we have seen the cracks in our system widen, and I am grateful how many more of us can now see and speak of injustice. As a community, we've learned what work is essential. Childcare, health care, grocery, and cleaning staff. We know that's supporting our neighbors, supporting women and work, supporting strong institutions. We know that matters now. We're banging pots and pans every Friday night. We're putting up yard signs. But are we still showing up? Are we showing up for everyone's labor in our community? Does everyone feel welcome? Importantly, does everyone feel able to both ask for help and to give it? Because we're all going to struggle. If this year hasn't taught us anything, it's taught us that. When community works, when we're respected with good conditions and living wages, when government holds some of the pieces for us, like health care and family medical leave and progressive tax policy, as the senator spoke, then we each have more space for when our neighbor's car won't start or to love on our difficult child or be curious in a disagreement at town meeting. We have dignity then. We don't need to fight for scraps. We don't need to wait for it anymore. We can be here for each other. We are here for each other. That's a vision I'm carrying forward with each of you. With amends for each moment we didn't fight hard enough or rest lovingly enough and with renewed commitment to stand in solidarity with each of you. Thank you and Happy New Year.
So the next speaker is a wonderful person, and it's a great honor to introduce Sharon Levinson. Sharon has been a registered nerd for years in the area. She worked at Browborough VA Clinic, Browborough Retreat, Browborough Memorial Hospital, and now she works as a memory care specialist. She's providing support to people living at home with dementia, and she has a virtual wellness company. Sharon has been a lifelong runner. Sadly, she was hit by a truck while running three years ago. She had numerous injuries and orthopedic surgeries, one of which had to be redone just a month ago. She's very grateful for health care benefits during the hospitalization and follow-up care. Sharon is very passionate about supporting and honoring veterans in any way possible and is an associate member of the local chapter of the Vietnam Veterans of America. Sharon is proud to be part of the committee that is bringing the Moving Wall to Brattleboro. It's going to be at the Full Flex Field on September 16th through the 20th. All veterans and the public are invited to attend. Frank Gloverby is going to be passing out flyers if you're interested. So without much ado, Sharon Levinson.
Thank you. Oh, my. Might have a mechanical issue here. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much, Orly, for the introduction. I appreciate it. In keeping with today's theme of community, we are so fortunate to have such great leadership from Bernie to set the tone for this by creating a culture where we not only accept diversity and equality, but we actually get to celebrate it here in Vermont. And here he is on Labor Day, looking out for us by working hard on the infrastructure bill to improve the quality of our lives. So thank you. And to expound upon two points that Orly made, I have been fortunate enough to experience a feeling of community after my original accident three years ago. a feeling of community after my original accident three years ago and now with my new issue. The outpouring of offers to help from neighbors, friends, veterans that I used to work with, thank you, at the VA, and so many others. I mean, I've received phone calls, people offering me to bring me to appointments, for rides, go grocery shopping for me. And a lot of these are people that I don't even know, but they heard of my incident. So, I'm also very fortunate, aware of how fortunate I am, to have healthcare benefits, which is another area that Bernie advocates for all of us to have healthcare benefits. And I don't know where I would be if I didn't have them. And then, the other example of being part of the community is the incredible amount of support we've gotten from this community in bringing the Moving Wall to Browlboro, which Orley mentioned will be on the 16th through the 20th. And we also appreciate the support from Bernie and his staff in this endeavor. Every one of you has been affected personally, professionally, financially by the strains of the pandemic. Yet, it's been amazing how many of you, businesses, restaurants, media outlets, the police department, motorcycle groups, have donated materials, food, time, space, labor to make this happen. This is such an important time to celebrate all of our veterans and thank them for their service and their sacrifice to our country. So, thank you to everyone. And we could not have done, we would not be here if it wasn't for the veterans. So, basically, to wrap up, thank you to Bernie and his staff for spending Labor Day and Rosh Hashanah Eve with us in this great community. And thanks to all of you for being such wonderful neighbors. Take care. Thank you.
Let me thank all of our great speakers. What I want to do now is to take questions from the audience that we have. Maya, what do we got? Mic there, and we got a mic there. We got two mics. I can't take a million questions. We're going to get pretty soon down to Middlebury, but let's get going. Do the best I can here. All right. Okay. We got a question right here? Let's do it.
Hey, Senator Sanders.
Hold that mic close to your mouth.
Thank you for coming today. The Supreme Court is currently a powerful tool of the far right, working against our civil rights, our voting rights, even their public health and safety during a pandemic. Will you probably push your colleagues to end the filibuster and expand the Supreme Court?
I will push my colleagues, as I have, to end the filibuster. Absolutely. Yep. Hold the mic close to your mouth.
Hi, Bernie. I was going to ask, what, like, Mr. Trump caused that melee in Washington, and I was wondering what can we, I mean, he let, he let certain individuals go to jail, Kwame Kilpatrick and...
All right. I think I got the question.
All right. But the question, yeah, the question is, what can we do and what do you think?
Well, there is, well, the question is, what can we do to hold not only him, but the instigator of a resurrection, of the insurrection accountable? And the answer is, right now, as you may know, in the House, there is an investigation going on. People are going to jail. Look, in this country, we can disagree with each other, but nobody has the right to do what those people did on January 6th. That was a real insult to American democracy.
Thank you, Senator. Will you use the Budget Reconciliation Act to end all federal funding for police and schools and instead replace it with nurses, mental health professionals, so that our children, instead of being punished, can actually enjoy their right to health and dignity?
Police, police reform is an issue that we're working on. It is not going to be in the reconciliation bill. Yep.
Hi. Thanks for doing this. I'd like to ask you, speak to the American trucker, the hard workers, essential workers, lots of regulation. How do we bring them forward in the ride to your climate goals without imposing anything to...
Well, I think I understand the question. And the question is, it goes without saying that when we do a major project, we want to make sure it's environmentally sound. I don't think there's a whole lot of dispute on that. But I think it's also a little bit absurd that it takes years and years and years to do it. And I think we need, you know, if we are going to rebuild this country in so many ways, we need to have strong environmental legislation. We need to protect the environment, but we need to move these things along and not drag them out forever. I mean, that's a general view that I hold. Okay? Thanks. Sarah?
Hello, Bernie. I wonder if you recall 10 years ago, supporting my organization, Browlboro Common Sense, in an effort to start a local Wall Street tax. You helped us. You gave us a contact with Doug Hoffer. And that project is now late, but very well-developed. We also need, at this point, since our attorney is retired, we need more help to bring this to the ballot pretty soon. I wonder if we could, if you could just put that in your agenda to think about...
Well, look, one of the things that we are trying to do in this legislation is to demand that the wealthy and large corporations stop paying their fair share of taxes. And there are a number of approaches toward progressive taxation. And one of them is certainly a fee on Wall Street speculation. Absolutely. I mean, I have long been in favor of that, and we'd look forward to working with you to see if you can gain support here. Thank you.
Senator, thank you for all that you've done in my lifetime. I can't think of anyone who's done more for labor than you have.
Thank you.
My question is, since you've been in politics and national politics, there has been a few people that have followed in the same progressive fashion, like AOC and Jevon Bowman. And how do we get more people involved?
Good. Good. Great. Look, one of the things that I am proud of is the growth of the progressive movement in this country. And the reason that we are able to begin to do what we are doing in Washington is because of you. It is because of progressives all over this country who demanded that the government think big, not small, and that we began to elect some great people, mostly to the House of Representatives. So, you got people like Alexandria, like Ilhan, like Rashida, like Ayanna, like Pramila, like Mark Bowman, there, Jones. There are a lot of great people, new people, new voices, who are demanding that the House of Representatives move forward in a progressive direction. And what we are doing right now, I mean, what the progressive movement has got to do is elect more of those and certainly more progressive members to the United States Senate. So, that is absolutely on the agenda of what we've got to do. No question about it.
Hi. Thank you for all you've done. Even while you've been working on the reconciliation bill, both the Senate and the House, with Democratic votes, have voted to increase the military budget over what President Biden asked.
Yes.
What can he done about that?
Well, I think you got to make it clear. I won't go through. The answer is, you're absolutely right. We are spending well over $700 billion a year on the military, and we got 600,000 people who are homeless. So, I was disappointed in that vote, and I will do the best that I can do to make sure that the Senate does not follow suit.
Senator and everybody who spoke today, thank you so much for taking the stance on expanded unemployment. And especially Senator, thank you for your entire career of advocating for labor. This weekend, millions of people are going to lose federal pandemic unemployment insurance. How will you use budget reconciliation to fix this broken system?
We are going to do everything we can in every way to make sure that people are not stranded without the benefits they need to survive, absolutely, in every way.
Thank you, Senator. Hi, Bernie, Rick here. We've known each other a long time, and I count on you for straight answers to difficult questions. This one, I don't think is that difficult, but I haven't been able to get a straight answer from any of the three of you in a year and a half. All this money that's going to housing, why in the process of this have we not just gone ahead and fully funded the HUD Section 8 voucher program, which is a well-established, very well-run, means-tested program, instead of this hodgepodge of difficult-to-navigate, fraud-ridden, and apparently, these days, not even well-being, you know, being put to use. Apparently, a lot of the money is not even getting to the people.
Well, you're talking about the eviction issue.
I'm talking, I'm talking about subsidizing rent. The eviction issue only comes up when there's either rent not paid or people who...
All right. Let me, let me answer your question if I could.
Who have problems and are problems...
Okay. Okay. You got a lot of people behind you there.
Yes.
Okay. The answer to your question is, there will be a significant amount of money going into Section 8. But we need to also build affordable housing and build low-income housing in this country. Okay. Question over here.
Bernie, longtime follower and great believer in the rationale of your presentation. My question is, what can, what can all of us do to help to assuage the Republican senators and representatives to try to move some of your agenda forward more effectively?
Thank you. Good question. Look, you have friends in other states. You are members, in some cases, of national organizations that have chapters in other states. It is very interesting to me that the Republicans say a lot about the reconciliation bill, except they don't attack any of the provisions in it. You know why? Because all of the provisions, including progressive taxation, are extremely popular. So, they'll talk about everything under the sun. They won't talk about what's in the bill. They know that their constituents, whether they're Republican, Democrat, or independent, support what we're doing. So, I would urge everybody, please, get on your phone, put pressure on those senators who are not prepared to support this. Thank you for your question.
Thank you, Bernie, for everything you've done. Been a longtime friend and supporter. 10 years or so ago, you held a meeting up north with Mr. Gatai from VTEL, where you had him promise to support the small rural areas with broadband. And you promised to hold his feet to the fire to do that. Our area, in the Tri-Mountain area between Bromley, Stratton, and Magic Mountain, still have a tremendous number of young people and small businesses with no functional broadband. What are you going to do to help us get that?
Thank you for raising that question. I mean, broadband, lack of broadband in rural America is a very, very serious problem. You're right. It's hard to do a business. It's hard for kids to do well in school unless they have broadband. The issue is twofold. Number one, access, getting broadband to underserved areas. The other issue is affordability and not allowing Comcast and a few corporations to rip the American people off. You'll be happy to know that within this, these two bills, there are tens of billions of dollars going to expanding broadband. So, it is an issue that we are addressing in these bills.
We are still looking at three years or more.
All right. All I can tell you is, you're right. It's a huge issue. There's a lot of money going into it. Yes, ma'am?
Hi. Huge fan. I've seen you a lot of times, saved my life a billion times in New Orleans. I can't even thank you now.
Thank you.
Sure. Right. How do you feel about what happened like 15 minutes ago with the police, with the man who tried to shake your hand?
Well, what I think, first of all, in this day and age, and I won't talk about security in general or me, I think for hundreds of people to come out to a meeting, we need to have proper security. We don't need to have people disrupting the meeting. If somebody wants to shake my hand, they can do it, but they don't have the right to disrupt a meeting. That's wrong. Okay? In my view. Well, I do shake hands, but you don't have the right to come up. And first of all, I mean, just, I don't want to get into this thing. You know, somebody comes up, you're saying they wanted to shake their hand. Well, that's fine. There are people who come up to a stage with other intentions in mind. And we're not mind readers here. The police are not mind readers, so...
Are you going to help him get out of jail?
You can help him get out of jail, but he'll get out of jail. I'm sure he will get out of jail. Okay, sir?
Hi. I'm a 58-year-old information technologies professional. I should be making $60,000 to $80,000 a year. And I've become very unwillingly, the last few years, part of the gig economy. So, how are you going to address people like me? You know, like, I'm going to have to be late writing my rent check because I get treated like a small business, but I don't qualify as a small business. It's all $10.99, et cetera.
So, you're what, independent entrepreneur? Is that what you are?
Information technology.
Yeah.
I'm very well-trained and very well-experienced, and I should be making really good money. I'm not.
Okay. Because you're not treated as a worker, but as an independent?
Yes.
Yeah. Contract, independent contract. Look, this is an issue...
...and lifting those guys...
You got it. There are millions of people in that boat. California attempted to do something about that. It is something that we really have to do. No question about it. Independent contractors are getting ripped off, and we have to make sure that they get the protections that they need. Yes?
Yeah. I'm just like a small business, except for taxes and benefits.
Yep. Got it. Okay, ma'am?
Hi. Thank you so much for this reconciliation act you spoke of today. Thank you for your actions so far in the war in Yemen. And I ask that you, as a representative of Vermonters and other folks, that you please introduce a Yemen War Powers Resolution this month to get us out of that core and to stop killing the war with some...
Well, not only, I agree. And not only, not only are we going to do that, we're introducing a general war powers act, which will make it impossible for presidents to do what has been the case for many, many years, kind of unilaterally go to war. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm just, I was asking, I had a quick question about the bill. And the infrastructure bill is a good example of a bill that looked very different when it started.
Yep.
But we came out with it at the end. It's good, but like you said, not good enough.
Right.
What is our plan for this reconciliation bill for getting folks like Joe Manchin on board? We have to make compromises somewhere, but where are we going to do that?
Well, I don't want to go into all of the details. All that I can tell you is there is an enormous amount of work to be done to make sure that 50 members, and that's all that we got, plus the Vice President, will support the strongest bill possible. We were successful, more or less, with the American Rescue Plan, and I'm confident that we're going to be able to do it again. It's not easy. I mean, you got 50 members, and any one person can say, hey, to hell with you, not supporting it. So, there is a lot of work to be done, and we're doing it, doing the best we can. Thanks. All right. Maybe three more on either side will do it. So, woman in black, you'll be the last question. Yeah.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you for your service for all of us. And my question regarding taxes, because I know one of the things you're on, that how is the reconciliation package going to get paid for?
Yep.
And I know probably in this political environment, you're not going to be able to change the tax structure as much as you would like. But one thing I just recently read about was changes to the capital gains tax structure, which I totally agree in terms of passive income. It used to be a lot higher before Reagan got elected.
Right.
And everybody was doing fine back then. But the one thing that concerns me is making sure that those changes don't negatively impact small family businesses and especially in the run of our family farms.
Yes.
On that.
Yes. Look, the President has been very strong, and I agree with him, in saying that as we fund this bill, nobody earning less than $400,000 a year will pay a nickel more in taxes. And you're right. We're all going to protect family farms, small businesses as well. The goal is to make sure the guys who have the money, who today are not paying their fair share, are the ones who are asked to help us rebuild America.
Thank you, Senator. Senator, for absolutely everything. As you well know, our public money at municipal and state and other levels is on deposit with the very commercial banks that are perpetuating racial wealth inequality, climate change, and other disaster. And it seems like, I mean, you are clearer than anybody about how the crises that we face call for bold solutions, and we need desperately public institutions, and the clock is ticking. Many of us see public banking, particularly local public banking, as a very immediate way, very quickly, to pull money out of the banks, particularly that are financing fossil fuel extraction, and again, not serving communities and harming communities of color. So, what do you think? What are our prospects?
I agree with you. You know, ironically, one of the more conservative states in the country, you know that state is, North Dakota, has a very effective historically public bank. I believe in it. Okay?
How do we make it happen?
Good question. I mean, it's an issue, I mean, also, you know, legislature is going to deal on that in terms of what we can do in Vermont. In Washington, we can make it easier for states to move in that direction. I think that's the general answer. Okay, sir? Okay, sir?
Thank you, Senator. I just wanted to say that your career has been very inspirational in many young Americans, and, you know, had this past year...
Thank you.
...had a big fire in a lot of young people's bellies for political change. So I'm gonna ask you, what can young activists do to further, you know, correct for this action?
Look, you guys are the future of America, and what we have got to do is change people's attitudes toward politics. It just drives me a little bit nuts that on any given Sunday, you've got millions of people worried about who's gonna win the football games, or who's gonna win the baseball games, or worried about entertainment. All that's fine, and yet, public policy will determine whether you get a decent education that you can afford, whether you got a good job, whether the air you breathe is clean. And somehow or another, that is, you know, not something we talk about, we'll get involved in. So the role you can play in school or anyplace else is explain to young people that the future of the world depends upon their involvement, okay? We gotta break through that stuff and let them understand that all of what government does is enormously important.
Shana Tova, Bernie, and everybody, Shana Tova. I just would like to say that with regard to climate change, and this bill is really great, and thank you for everything that you do, and I've always been a huge supporter of you, and I wish you were way higher up than where you are right now. But we need to address much more than climate change and much quicker, species extinctions, and stop cutting forests down. We need to honor treaties that we made when Europeans first came, and listen to the original people who have lived here for thousands of years. We need to stop line three right now. We need to reduce our energy use rather than only switching over to renewables. So we need like a huge paradigm shift. More things have to change, and there's not just global climate change, but global ecological imbalance and collapse in the future if we don't. So I would like to know how you are going to help stop line three.
If line seconds or less.
And then also, the Vermont Climate Council is calling for a just trans... Three fifty Vermont's calling for a just transition to a fossil-free future. Three fifty Vermont has postcards to send to the VCC, and I will have one for you to sign.
Okay. Look, you've laid out, you know, we use the term existential, because that's really what it is, and it impacts the air we breathe, it impacts what kind of future our kids are going to have. We were able to kill the Keystone Pipeline, you know that. And that was no small thing, no small thing. And we are working on, look, if we're gonna move away from fossil fuels, we don't need more pipelines, and that's the simple truth. Okay, thank you. Last question.
Thank you for taking my question, and my question follows right on the heels of hers, which is that we know the climate crisis is gonna require international, global efforts to working together, but we also know that we have, as USers, Europeans disproportionately, we are polluting. What is Congress doing right now, and is there anything in the works for reparations or rather reinforcing what's going on in the Third World developing countries and the indigenous leaders there?
Your point is a very good point, and it's not been made... The woman just asked me a good question, but there's one part that is left out, is if we miraculously do everything right in transforming our energy system today, it's not gonna solve the problem. It requires international cooperation. I will tell you, one of the areas that I am concerned is especially among right-wing Republicans, but not only them, there is a growing anti-Chinese attitude. Now, we all have concerns about China's authoritarianism, what they're doing to some of their minorities, what they did in Hong Kong, serious issues. On the other hand, the greatest emitter of carbon in the world right now is not the United States, it is China. And we're gonna have to figure out how we work with China, with India, with Europe, countries all over the world, because this is uniquely a global issue. No one country can do it alone. So, you know, we're gonna have differences with other countries, and we gotta deal with those differences, not ignore the differences. But on the other hand, we are gonna have to work together in an unprecedented way to bring the whole world together to combat climate change. All right, well, let me just thank everybody for coming. It was a great turnout on a beautiful day, and thank you, Brattleboro, for being one of the great progressive communities, not only in Vermont, but in America. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Happy birthday to you.
You sure can. We give it to Katie. Yep, thank you.
Thank you, there's my address.
Happy birthday to you.
Bernie, thank you.
I come from Texas.
Ma'am, you have a pen?
Yes. Thank you so much, Bernie. I love you, Bernie.
What's going on?
Thank you, Bernie, we love you.
I have to say hi to you.